Good evening and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, March 7th, 2022. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. We'll begin with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by Mr. Rozell this evening. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you for guidance and wisdom as we prepare to deliberate at the issues that will help determine the future of the city of Troy. Grant everyone patience and forbearance during the major projects we have in the forthcoming year. Bless citizens, city staff, and elected officials. All these things we ask in your majestic name, Lord Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under valor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have two public hearings this evening, both for agricultural district requests. We'll begin the public hearing for Resolution R. 25, 2022. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution approving application of EMAT, EMARI, E-Mark and Ohio Limited Family Partnership for renewal of farmland in an agricultural district.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. If anybody wishes to speak on Resolution R. 25, 2022 during this public hearing, now's the time to do so. Please come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing no one, we will declare the public hearing closed for Resolution R. 25, 2022. We'll move on to the public hearing for Resolution R. 26, 2022. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution approving application of Neal Brothers, Inc. for renewal of farmland in an agricultural district.
If anybody wishes to speak on the public hearing for Resolution R. 26, 2022, you're invited to come to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing no one, we'll declare the public hearing for Resolution R. 26, 2022 closed. These two items are on our agenda tonight, but they will be assigned to the Community and Economic Development Committee for further discussion, and will probably be dropped back up in front of City Council for two weeks from now. We'll move on to a summary of minutes. Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes of the February 22nd, 2022 meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, February 22, 2022. Finance Committee. Committee recommended legislation be prepared amending the guidelines for the Small Business Development revolving loan fund program. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the Park Department Maintenance Office building. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended legislation be preparing, be prepared, authorizing bidding for the 2022 paving program. Law and Ordinance Committee reported regarding the transfer of a liquor license for the 1314 Eastside Sanoco doing business as the Eastside Mini Mart. Resolution Number R. 17, 2022, construction of new Park Department Maintenance Office building was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R. 18, 2022, bid and contract for the paving program, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R. 19, 2022, revising the guidelines for the Small Business Development revolving loan fund, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 04, 2022, the final acceptance of the Camfurelli Annexation, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 05, 2022, final acceptance of Sheridan Annexation was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:21.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Now that's council's disposal of the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Ladies and gentlemen, we have nine committee reports this evening. We'll begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee and two reports for Mr. Schilling.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lutz. The first report is a, this committee met on February 28th to discuss the moratorium that has been established on the construction of surface street parking lots within the historic preservation overlay district boundaries. Such moratorium has ended, and staff indicated that the circumstance that led to the moratorium is no longer exists. The committee also discussed the parking studies done from 1960 to 2020, and the potential future need for additional parking in a historic district. It was noted that while a multi-level parking structure has been included in the city's five-year CIP, many factors would need to be reviewed prior to design or construction. Upon discussion, the committee does not recommend that the moratorium on service street parking lots in a historic district be reissued.
Thank you, Ms. Oh, who was that submitted by?
Oh, I'm sorry. The committee. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Samuel Pierce, Mrs. Lynn Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are there any comments or questions on this committee report? Seeing none, move on.
Thank you. The subject is the vacation of utility easements between 1419 Legacy Court and 1423 Legacy Court in the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club subdivision. This committee met on February 28th to consider the vacation of utility easements between in lots 11308 and in lot 11309 in the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club subdivision. The purchaser of the lots has requested that the lots be replanted into one lot, which requires the vacation of the easement along the property lines. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the vacation of the utility easements between in lot 11308 and in lot 11309 in the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club subdivision, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related to the easements. This was respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report?
Mr. Chairman. Just to note, in the legislation itself, it does ask to be considered as emergency legislation, even though that is not on the agenda itself.
Duly noted. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee for two reports from Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This committee met on February 28th to consider the transferring the property at 130 and 1/2 Ash Street, which is owned by the Lincoln Community Center Association, to the ownership of the city of Troy. The parcel will then be replatted into a single lot with the Lincoln Community Center property at 110 Ash Street that is under the ownership of the city. We understand that this is, this parcel will be a part of the area where a playground and storage shed could be established, should be, could be established, subject to the approval of future DRO application. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the transfer of point 170 acre parcel at 130 and 1/2 Ash Street, parcel 00, or DO8, whatever the number, in the name of the city of Troy. This committee supports the emergency legislation so that the transfer can be completed without delay. This is respectfully submitted by Jeffrey Schilling, Todd Severt, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? Please continue, Mr. Rozell.
This committee met also on February 28th to review information related to the opioid settlement agreement authorized last year. Committee proceeds are forthcoming, and the state has provided a memorandum of understanding for the parties to execute regarding distribution and the use of funds and other related issues. In addition, regions are set to, up within the state, and regional representatives are to be named to help provide governments. There is an, there's concurrence within the Miami County cities for Fire Chief Simmons to be a, to be the representative, accepting the MOU and confirming the representative must be by separate legislative actions. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the Ohio, One Ohio MOU and authorize Director of Public Service and Safety to, excuse me, execute any acceptance documents and designate Fire Chief Matthew Simmons as a representative of Region 15 Board. As the Board will need to meet as soon as possible, and with, and with pending settlements, this committee supports emergency legislation. This is submitted by Jeffrey Schilling, Todd Severt, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee and Mr. Severt.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on February 28th to consider amending the allocation of fines for parking violations. That revenue is currently totally allocated to the Parking and Downtown Improvement Fund. With the removal of meters and parking lots having no fees, revenues into the Parking Meter Fund is negligible. Changing how the parking violation fines are allocated will provide some revenue to the Parking Meter Fund. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending the allocation of the revenues related to the fines for parking violations to be 75% to the Parking Meter Fund, Fund 712, and 25% to the Parking and Downtown Improvement Fund, Fund 231. The committee further supports emergency legislation and making this change retroactive to January 1st, 2022. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Rozell, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Severt. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Personal Committee and Mr. Pierce.
Committee members Marshall and Pierce met on February 28th to consider establishing the position of Assistant Golf Professional for the Miami Shores Golf Course. This position will help Miami Shores continue to grow and build on the momentum that it has generated over the last two years, enhance revenue opportunities, and maximize the use of the improvements that council has approved for Miami Shores. It is the recommendation of this council that legislation be prepared approving an amendment to the FLSA exempt salary ordinance to establish the position of Assistant Golf Professional under the Miami Shores Golf Course at the MGT zero range. Respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chairman, Samuel Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, move on to the last committee of the evening with three reports. Streets and Sidewalks with Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on February 28th also to consider preliminary consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding ODOT resurfacing State Route 55 from Peters Avenue, Grant Street, to Franklin Street during state fiscal year 2023. The city will be required to pay a portion of that project, currently estimated at $98,000, of an approximately $500,000 project. Based on the final bid by ODOT, the city's cost could be adjusted, as we have seen by other bids. It is the recommendation of this committee that the legislation be prepared to provide preliminary consent for ODOT to pave State Route 55 from Peters Avenue slash Grant Street to Franklin Street during state fiscal year 2023. Based on the ODOT format, we do support emergency legislation on this item, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Mr. Phillips, please continue.
Committee also continued to meet on February 28th to consider this item, the recommendation of the Assessment Equalization Board Committee, and that council approve a revised estimated assessment for the property at 118 South Stanfield Road as set forth in the detailed report and the attached report of the AEB. This was the only property for which an appeal to the estimated assessments was received, and it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the Assessment Equalization Board. This committee supports emergency legislation on this item so that the reconstruction project will remain on schedule, and this is also respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Mr. Phillips, please go on.
Let me scroll down here. Also, on February 28th, the committee met to consider a request to increase the project authorization for the West Main Street Duct Bank Improvements Project from $700,000 to $1 million. With the multitude of factors currently driving up the cost of materials and construction, the consultant for this project has recommended that council increase the project authorization so that a contract can be awarded following the March 9 bid opening, assuming there is an acceptable bid. This project involves critical, critical utility work that must be done ahead of the West Main Street Corridor Improvements Project, which needs to stay on schedule based on the state and federal funding the city is to receive to help fund this project. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the West Main Street Duct Bank Improvements Project at a total cost not to exceed $1 million. And due to the need for the duct bank work to be ahead of the West Main Street Corridor Improvements Project, this committee supports emergency legislation so that a contract can be entered into without delay following the bid opening. And this again is respectfully submitted by Mr. Pierce, Mrs. Snee, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we now open the floor to citizens' comments for items on the agenda. We have seven resolutions and four ordinances. If you wish to address council on any of those items, please come to the podium and give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council. Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the first resolution of the evening, Resolution R. 20, 2022?
Resolution Number R. 20, 2022. Resolution approving participation in Region 15 governance structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and Declaring an Emergency. This is related to the opioid settlement, has been requested by the state. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution, Resolution RX. 21, 2022?
Resolution Number R. 21, 2022. Resolution appointing initial, initial regional representative to the One Ohio Recovery Foundation, Inc. Board and declaring an emergency. The representative will be the Fire Chief, Matthew Simmons, and this is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next resolution, Resolution R. 22, 2022?
Resolution Number R. 22, 2022. A resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 55 within the right of way of the city of Troy, Ohio, and FY 2023, participation in the project and declaring an emergency. The state will be paving from Peters Grant to Franklin Street, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 23, 2022?
Resolution Number R. 23, 2022. Resolution accepting the report of the Assessment Equalization Board adopting the estimated assessments prepared for the sidewalk shared use path portion of the South Stanfield Road Reconstruction Project Phase 1 and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R. 24, 2022?
Resolution Number R. 24, 2022. Resolution amending Resolution Number R. 57, 2021, increasing the authorization for the West Main Street Duck Bank Improvement, Improvements Project and declaring an emergency. The authorization is being increased from $700,000 to $1 million. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee? Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance 08, 2022?
Ordinance Number 08, 2022. Ordinance amending Ordinance Number 01390 regarding the allocation of fines for all parking violations and declaring an emergency. This will require that 75% of the parking, that 75% of the fines go into the Parking Meter Fund and 25% into the Parking and Downtown Improvement Fund, and this will be retroactive to January 1, first reading.
Under the understanding that the chairman of the Finance Committee wishes this to go to a second reading.
That's correct.
Thank you. This will stand as the first reading, and this will go on to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last ordinance of the evening, Ordinance 09, 2022?
Ordinance Number 09, 2022. Ordinance amending Ordinance Number 068, 2021, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the city of Troy, Ohio. This will establish the new position of Assistant Golf Professional and the wage for that first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee? Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. 7, 2022?
Ordinance number O. 7, 2022. Ordinance approving the vacation of utility easements in the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club subdivision and declaring an emergency. This will permit the two parcels to be developed, to be combined into one parcel and developed, and the developer is hoping to proceed very soon. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee? Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, Ordinance O. 8, 2022?
Ordinance number O. 8, 2022.